I'd like to call this meeting in the Westland City Council to order. We begin the pledge of allegiance led by Council President Pro Tem Andrea Rukowski.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Clerk, roll call.
Councilwoman Bowman. Councilman Godbout. Councilman Hersberg.
Here.
Councilman McDermott.
Here.
Pro Tem Rukowski.
Present.
Councilwoman Sampe.
Present.
President Hart.
Here.
Affirm, Ms. President.
Thank you. Begin special presentations announcements with Director Hassan Saab for some holiday decorations, I believe. Oh, and the mayor. Okay, very good. I apologize, mayor.
Hey, thank you, City Council. It's that time of year again. It's our 2023 City of Westland Halloween decorating contest, and we have some great displays all around town that took place before Halloween. And I know our city DPS, they went around and took a look and picked some great winners. But I want to start off by mentioning some of the honorable mentions, people who didn't make the final cut but also did a great job, so we want to give them a shout out. Amy Marshall on Dartmouth Drive. Rick Walsh on Alper Street. Christina Williams on Macosta Street. Angie Becker on Ricky Street. Richard Keiko on Lonnie Boulevard. And Jennifer McCann on Oregon Avenue. So let's give them all a round of applause. Now, we're going to go on to the category winners. The contest had three categories: best autumn display, most spooky, and most over the top. So I want to bring up our winner for best autumn display, Melinda Schmidt on Hively Street. Best autumn display. And then we're going to have most spooky display, Austin and Skylar on Treadwell Street. And last is for most over the top display, and I've seen this one myself many times, Matt Sutella on Gary Avenue. So I want to just say congratulations to all our winners, and we're going to come up and take a picture. And I got a certificate for you from the City of Westland to congratulate you on your great decorations, so we appreciate you. So we'll come up front here.
Take a group photo?
So this is for Austin and Skylar. And then Melinda. What slide? Matt? Is Matt here? We'll get him. Yeah. Oh.
Don't worry. Thank you. All right, once again, congratulations to the decorating winners. We appreciate it. Makes the neighborhood look good. And then you give my wife a reason to yell at me for not putting anything up, so thank you again. All right. We will now move questions or input on the agenda from the public. This section will allow a person to be recognized only at the beginning of the meeting to address the council pertaining to items that are specifically on the business agenda. Questions asked may be responded to during the agenda item following a motion and support from the council. Is there anyone on my right? Is there anyone on my left? Yes, sir.
Arthur Warren, Westland resident, under new business, item three. I'm just interested in what type of improvements are going to be made with this assistant director and what was lacking in the parks without this assistant director. Second question is to finances under taxes, the Euston Public School taxes. So if anyone pays, the taxes has been alleviated, the tax bill has been alleviated by the state of Michigan. So if any late tax bills come in, will the citizens be charged for those bills since the state has relieved people of that responsibility? Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience? Input on the agenda? All right, we'll close input on the agenda and move to the consent calendar. Is there a motion? Motion from Councilman McDermott, supported from Councilwoman Sampe. Are there any changes to the consent calendar? Any changes to the consent calendar? Is there any dissent? Any dissent? Seeing no dissent, motion carried unanimously.
Council has approved the following consent calendar items. Approval of request from Don Nicholson Enterprises LLC to organize and promote the 12th Annual All-American Wayne Road Cruise, which will take place on June 8, 2024. Traffic control order 2023-10, install one handicap parking sign in front of 31074 Steinhauer. Adoption of ordinance 248A114, an ordinance to amend Chapter 27 of the Westland City Code by amending Article 6 to add Section 27 through 36 to provide existing marijuana microbusiness conditional licenses, an opportunity to operate as a Class A marijuana microbusiness consistent with Cannabis Regulatory Agency rules. The last item approved on the consent calendar today, approval of extension of the 2023 winter tax payment without additional penalty until February 29, 2024, moving to payment of voucher.
Is there a motion? Motion from Councilman Hersberg.
Support.
Support from Councilwoman Sampe. Is there any discussion? On the vouchers?
The question was, will the tax bills in the Euston School district change now that the state issued federally?
I understood that to be kind of a statement for item D, but if you... Yeah. If it's a question, I'll go ahead and break right now. Steve Smith?
Okay, through the chair, Mr. Warren, I think, asked the question. I'm not sure I understand the question, on the school tax for the property tax pose? Is that what you're asking?
Yes, sir.
So if the property is 100% property principal resident exemption, there is no school tax on the operating part? There is on the debt. If there's debt on the, like, if they issued bonds or anything like that, the tax bill would still have those amounts on there, so. I can get with you after the meeting if you want.
You're pleased to do.
Okay.
All right. All right, we'll go back to the vouchers. Is there any other discussion? Any discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Signal dissent, motion carried unanimously.
Moving to new business, item one, approval of minutes of the regular meeting held November 6, 2023.
Some motion from Pro Tem Rukowski, supported from Councilman Godbout. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Roll call.
Councilwoman Bowman.
abstaining.
Councilman Godbout.
Yes.
Councilman Hersberg.
abstaining.
Councilman McDermott.
Yes.
Councilwoman Rukowski.
Yes.
Councilwoman Sampe.
Yes.
President Hart.
Yes.
Motion passes. New business, item two, request for closed study session on December 4, 2023 at 6 o'clock PM to consult with legal counsel in connection with France versus Westland and M. Johnson, case number 23-02229, and to consider material exempt from discussion or disclosure by state law pursuant to MCL 15268E and H.
Motion from Pro Tem Rukowski, supported from Councilman Hersberg. Roll call.
Councilwoman Bowman.
Yes.
Councilman Godbout.
Yes.
Councilman Hersberg.
Yes.
Councilman McDermott.
Yes.
Pro Tem Rukowski.
Yes.
Councilwoman Sampe.
Yes.
President Hart.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. New business, item three, introduction of manpower budget amendments for fiscal year 2024, increase one assistant Parks and Recreation Director position within the appointed officials and mayor's office and city clerk's pay plan.
Motion from Councilman Godbout, supported from Councilman Hersberg. Dan Block, mayor? There was a question as well about what the role...
Yes, thank you, Council President. I asked council to consider this motion, this introduction to the manpower budget amendment to add an assistant parks director for our Parks and Recreation Department. In 2019, former mayor William Wild hired Kyle Mulligan, who's our Parks and Recreation Director. I wasn't here, I was our state representative, but I watched him grow the department, try to build it back to a new level of service for our city. The department is still not anywhere close to where I think the city needs it to be. I have a lot of goals as far as bringing some of the programming out into the community for people of all ages, whether they be young people, seniors, and in all different parts of our community. We have some of the best parks in all of Wayne County. We have more parks than any other city other than the city of Detroit, but I believe they're underutilized. I think there's a need for this in our community to expand our programming, have more outreach. But Kyle's going to need the help, and he's going to speak on, you know, what some of the plans are. And if Dan Block wanted to talk about the budget implications, we've looked at our fourth quarter budget amendment. It would have a zero net effect on the general funds, so I want to do this in a fiscally responsible way. I'm asking city council to support it tonight. I've had a lot of conversations with the council members and members of our community, and I feel strongly that there's a lot of opportunity here to do some great things for our community in a fiscally responsible way.
Kyle?
Yeah, through the chair. I'm just going to go over a few slides here, just kind of detailing what this is, and hopefully this answers Mr. Warren's question as well. So just a little bit about what we already do. We have the community organization assistance with helping the local organizations on field space and helping maintain and run their programs. My department runs all of the field and room rentals throughout all of the city parks and buildings. We did implement the online way to be able to rent pavilions and rooms, which has increased the number of rentals this year, helping any of the other department needs with their assistance on boards and commission meetings, and coordinating with DPS on that schedule and making sure the rooms are set up. We also have the Park Ranger program. My department also processes the payroll. MSB payroll is all park rangers, ice arena, golf course, people who work at Jefferson Barnes, ordinance, as well as crossing guards. So we also have park maintenance, where we do assessments in conjunctions with the facilities department. We operate the Westland Rotary K-9 Corral with those applications that come in and to be able to get their key fobs. We run the Parks and Recreation Advisory Council, which is a seven-member board, grant research and overall improvement of the park system. This is one thing that I feel I would be able to dive into deeper with expanded manpower. And then the goal of this would be the City of Westland events throughout the year. We're going to continue that, but we always have flyer creation, promotion, and pre-event planning set up, and then dealing with sponsorships. So 2024 and beyond, obviously, what we want to do is continue what we're doing and work on the expansion, so continuing the reservations in the city events. But in 2024, we'd like to focus on the community engagement aspect and do more than what we're already offering, being able to have family game nights, being able to bring the community out at, you know, the different parks that we have. And then we also have a lot of projects that are up next year with the ARPA money that city council approved a couple meetings ago. We're going to start enhancing nine different parks over the next few years, so I'm going to need some more time to focus on that as well. So just a few of the challenges that my department is going through right now. The department size currently right now, it is technically three people if you count the foreman and DPS, but it is myself and one clerical staff. The resources and funding, we do have a small budget in order to run programs. I don't believe a lot of the programs would cost a lot of money depending on what we were looking for. The program space, not having a gym, and all of the fields are currently being used for nonprofit organizations to run through the year. The program participation in the past is something we haven't really seen a lot. We kind of have a lot of issues with the amount of participation, so I feel some manpower in order to make sure that that enrollment is staying up, something that I would feel would be beneficial. And then, just again, to reiterate, the field usage in the community organizations, basically from Memorial Day through Labor Day, you know, I'm unable to use some of the ball fields because we are helping the local organizations that we're currently wanting to continue to help. So this is a list of just some of the ideas. Again, this is not a full list. If anybody wants specific programming, please let us know. An expanded department is going to help make all of this possible, but starting pickleball leagues, you know, volleyball. Again, we have a lot, as the mayor said, we've got a lot of great parks that are underutilized, and I do feel the additional manpower would be beneficial to the community. So a little bit about what the assistant, what this would look like. They would be able to help plan and organize additional programs focusing on that community engagement that we're looking for, and then this would allow me to oversee the numerous projects that we're working on and be able to delegate those day-to-day operations that pull me away from that, and then be able to focus on the future of the Westland Parks Department. And then, again, just to reiterate, the city event expansion focusing on that community engagement, doing something with the community, you know, once a month, more often as opposed to, you know, the one or two community gatherings we have a year. So I'll turn it over to Dan for any of the questions.
Through the chair, yeah, so the agenda item itself, it states that it uses 77,000 of unassigned fund balance, but that's just because this is kind of separated from the overall large, I guess, budget amendment that typically comes every quarter. And as the mayor mentioned, the upcoming first quarter financial report that will be presented to council that will essentially zero out this effect that's on this agenda item, so.
All right, thank you. Anything from the maker? Councilman Godbout? Anything from the supporter?
Sure.
Councilman Hersberg?
Yeah, I'll just offer some words of support for this item. Back when I was first running for council back in 2011, we were still at the old city hall, we had a rec center. That rec center was demoed, I'm sure everybody's aware of that, and there was a lot of programming that was lost during that time. I don't want to speak to specific programs that were lost or what would come back or not, but we do have room for some of those programs in city hall. Now, when the rec center closed, we were still in the old city hall, there was no space to do anything, and our city won a number of years without even having a Parks Director. So I'd like to hear from council on it, but I will be in support. I think this is a good move to expand programming and see what we can do. Thank you.
Councilman Godbout?
Yeah, thanks. I too am in support of this. Actually, I've been advocating for expanding our Parks Department in the past several budgets. Our Parks and Rec Department basically currently consists of one body. We are the 10th largest city in the state, as was pointed out earlier this evening, and every community that's our size, larger than our size, smaller than our size, has at least a director, a deputy director, as well as programming assistants in their Parks and Rec Department. And we used to have that. Our Parks and Rec budget currently is hundreds of thousands of dollars less than when I first got on city council 20 years ago. Now, you can't say that costs have gone down over those 20 years, but we've decimated that department over the course of time, and it's time that we get it back so that we can provide the types of programming that our residents deserve, the types of programming that are going on in Livonia and Farmington Hills and Canton and all of the communities around us, Garden City, Wayne. All of those have larger Parks and Rec Departments than what the City of Westland has, and I'm glad our new mayor is bringing this forward, recognizing that we need to get back to basics, right? Providing quality life experiences for our residents. So I'm in support of that, and when you look at the numbers for what other communities are paying Parks and Rec Directors and Deputy Directors and even the program management level, we are well within or below what a lot of those other communities are paying for this service. Kyle's done an outstanding job of getting us moving in the right direction, and I think that this step is what it's going to take to continue that momentum so that we can make improvements for all of the residents in the community. Thanks.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion? Councilwoman Sampe?
Yeah, could I make a discussion and then also a motion?
Say again?
Could I make a discussion and then a motion?
You can.
Okay. So I spoke to mayor about this in length two times, and then I also spoke to Kyle as well, in addition to my colleagues, and I am immensely supportive of expanding our Parks and Rec because I am an athletic parent, so I travel across the country, baseball fields and such. So what I had told mayor is that I would like to have a study session, and also to Kyle, to understand his needs. So by putting a body in there and just throwing a body with no budget, it doesn't really serve a lot of purpose to support the programming. So what I would like to do is make a motion to hold a study session almost immediately so we can figure out Kyle's needs. The presentation was fantastic, there was no budget to it, so we don't know what the implications are to even fund the programming. So I think there's a lot of different programming elements that we need here in our city, but we don't have any dollar amounts attached to them, so we don't know how much he really needs in the Parks and Rec budget to support the programming. So a body in itself would be fantastic, but it doesn't necessarily help him program. So I really would like to have a study session, I would really like to dive deep to see what the department needs, and then from there, we would be able to discuss to see what we can provide you. And Kyle and I had a conversation to say, hey, maybe it might be more than a body, maybe it's two bodies, maybe it's a body and $100,000 to do everything he wants to do for the next 12 months, but we don't know until we get that need assessment. So that's what I'm proposing is just, you know, to make a motion to...
Right, so I want to understand your motion. So your motion, you said you wanted a study session, but that's not really a motion.
Yes.
So your motion would be, sorry, motion to postpone till date uncertain or motion to table, so...
I don't want it to die, I just want it till we have our study session.
So you'll need to articulate your motion. Do you wish to motion until date uncertain following a study session?
Yes, yes, motion to date uncertain.
Okay, thank you. Is there support? Is there support?
Support.
Support from Councilwoman Bowman. Is there any discussion on that motion? Do you have a discussion? You're the supporter. Councilwoman Bowman?
I, like Councilwoman Sampe, I'm very supportive of increasing our Parks and Rec. As one of my first votes here as a new councilwoman, I struggled because one of the things that I've asked for the last several months when I come up and talk is, you know, making sure that we actually are looking at things the right way, we are making good decisions, and we're not rushing something that doesn't need to be rushed. And I don't know that I have that full answer on that. I do have the concerns with the financial, I know we can actually, it's the same thing, like, is this the right position? Is this, there's just so many questions. Is this the right position right now? Is this what's really going to get us to where we want to go? When we, you know, what's the plan? What's the, what are the dollars behind it? There's so many questions, and I'm also the process person. People that know me know that I'm a process person, and it matters that we do things the right process, and my understanding is that there usually is a study session to determine if you're going to make these changes. So I am in support of the moving it to a study session before we actually make the vote.
All right. Is there any other discussion? Pro Tem?
Thank you, Council President. You know, I'm going to echo the comment of my colleagues as well, and I think, you know, we have had numerous conversations about the needs of the Recreation Department. I do have the same concerns about the timeline. You know, I can respect wanting to get things going. I find it a little peculiar to be allocating funds before we look at the budget amendments that would be coming in, and I also... And I also, you know, would like to have a study session before we talk about expanding our government. And that, to me, you know, requires, you know, a lot more thought. And, you know, I got, personally got the job description sent to me today, just a few hours ago. And, you know, I want to make sure, like, beyond those particular items, to the councilwoman's point is how are we going to fund them? Because we just saw a slide that said, you know, it's a very small budget, maybe we can make it work. So, if we're going to bring in a body, which I support, we need to have the additional components to make it work. So, thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion? Mayor?
Yeah. Sorry.
I just wanted to point out, you know, this item, and I appreciate all the comments, but this item is just the introduction. It's not the approval item. So, I just wanted to just point out that, yeah, thank you.
Is there any other discussion? Councilman Gabbell?
Yes, I will speak against postponing this. And this has nothing to do with Councilwoman Baumann's concerns or, she's new, right? She has never been through any of the process that it takes, okay? But I find it rather ironic that all of a sudden, we're open to having study sessions. I've asked for three years to have study sessions on multiple topics, and it wasn't until I had two other council members request those study sessions in a formal math method that we had a study session. And at that, it was a joke. It was a box-checking exercise because we wanted to have a reasonable discussion on items, okay? We've talked about Parks and Rec before. To my one colleague's comments about the budget, we'll get the budget in April, okay? And by the, by appointing someone now, they'll, he'll have the resources necessary to put together a new budget for an expanded department that will get April 1st by charter. So, you know, this is obstructionism at its best, right? We're just going to delay this right now so that we can stick it to the mayor and not follow through on this. This is a zero sum as far as cost because of the financials that our Finance Department has put together. It allows the new mayor to get started now, not wait till whenever we have this study session, because there wasn't a date attached to having this study session. So, you know, say what you will, this is, this is not in the best interest of the city. It is not in the best interest of improving services to the residents. It is strictly a move to block some things moving forward so that our new mayor can do his job. It's, and it's not bad enough that we want to delay this. He's already working from zero transition, okay? The outgoing administration, the only thing they did was remove the furniture from the office, take all of the papers out of City Hall, out of the offices in City Hall. So, there was no discussion with the mayor prior to taking office.
Yeah, what this has nothing to do with the motion.
It has to do with why we want to suddenly now have study sessions, okay? Over something that, you know, was very well explained in all of the documentation. Kyle sent that presentation to us earlier. I had plenty of chance to review it. We got our packet. We all had the opportunity to talk to finances, I did, as Ms. Baumann did. You know, it's just a stall tactic so that we can try and be difficult. That's all I have.
All right, let's have some order. Yeah, all right. As a reminder, this is a motion to postpone the introduction. So, is there any other discussion?
Yeah, I have my light on.
Councilman Hersberg?
Thanks. I have to agree with a lot of that sentiment, but I also do understand the concerns of the two councilwomen that spoke, referring to the dollar amount for this. So, there wouldn't be a change in the budget. I think the question that they were asking was, well, if they do all this new programming, what's that going to cost? And I don't think it's, we need somebody in there to figure out what programming they're going to do. And I think our director was talking about doing some community engagement and figuring that out. That's not for council to just figure out and put out when we want to work with the community for it. So, we won't have a dollar amount on any new programming until we get somebody in that spot and they make a proposal within the budget that we adopt. And, you know, I do understand the concerns there, but it was mentioned this is only the introduction. So, if we do want to have a study session, we can have a study session before this is adopted at the next meeting. I'm in support of that too, but there's no reason to postpone the introduction. And we're all here right now. The director's here to answer any questions, so, you know, I don't see why we wouldn't want to get moving on this. I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
All set, councilman? Yeah, I'm just going to have comment because everybody else gets to talk, so I'll be supporting this. Thank you. I'm passing the gavel. I'll be supporting, not pass, not to postpone. I agree. We want to be able to have the administration to give the Parks and Rec the resources that need to move forward. It was pointed out that sometimes the study session thing was a stall tactic. I would agree with him because I felt what it was like on the other side, and I don't want to do that back, right? So, I agree that a lot of this information's been put out ad nauseam, just as like I agreed it was before. So, I'll be consistent, and I'm going to support these three items to get forward. So, there we are.
What? I did, it's okay.
Councilwoman Baumann, did you?
I just want to share.
Again, this is on the postponement of the introduction.
It is on the postponement, and I appreciate the information that there's a postponement of the introduction that may have been a little bit advanced as far as which, what to postpone. At the same time, I'm not an obstructionist, and I appreciate, I appreciate, no, 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 I appreciate that I was not necessarily included in that, but I just want to make that clear that I don't, I know that I wasn't included in that process or that part of it because my goal is always going to be to, let's make sure we're doing the right process to get to the things, because our responsibility is to utilize, you know, it's not just rearranging dollars on the fund balance. It's actually saying, what am I doing for, how am I being fiscally responsible with the taxpayer money? And if there's unknown information financially, that's why I would want to be slowing it down. So, I just wanted to make that kind of out there. Thanks.
All right. Again, we're on the motion to postpone, which is a sub-motion of the main item, so just we're all clear. And typically, Roberts Rule offers two speaking moments for every item, so in order to keep this moving along, I'd like to do that. So, if anybody hasn't spoken twice and they have discussion on this sub-motion, is there any comment? Any discussion? Councilman McDermott?
Thank you, Council President. I will be in support of adopting this tonight and against the motion. I understand the concerns. I do think it's perfectly germane to have a study session to talk about the programming, to talk about the budgeting for that, separate from just the regular budget study sessions. And I think that once we get a grasp on who's going to be in this position, what Kyle's expectations are, and what programming's going to look like, I think we can have that study session. We should have that one, but I will be in support of adopting tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any discussion on the postponement? All right. I'm just going to go for roll call on the postponement. The motion is to postpone to a date uncertain to hold a study session on the introduction. Councilwoman Baumann?
I'm going to say no.
Councilman Gabbell?
No.
Hersberg?
Councilman McDermott?
No.
Pro Tem Murkowski?
Yeah.
Councilwoman Sampe?
Yes.
President Hart?
No.
Motion fails. We'll return to the introduction, the main motion. Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Is there any other discussion on the main motion? Councilman Hersberg?
Yeah, just as a last comment here, I just, since there is a concern from at least a couple of councilmembers to have a study session, I think we should do one before the adoption. So, this is just the introduction. I'll be in support of that, but I'll stick with them on wanting a study session and having a deeper conversation on this.
Just for clarity though, Councilman Hersberg?
Item four is to waive procedure to allow introduction, adoption of manpower budget for fiscal year in the same meeting.
Excuse me?
Just the floor. I'm done.
Just we're on the same page.
But we're not there yet.
But we're not there yet. All right. Item, next time.
Original motion.
Back to the original motion. Yes. Would you wish for a roll call? I would wish for a roll call. Thank you. Councilwoman Baumann?
Yes.
Councilman Gabbell?
Yes.
Councilman Hersberg?
Yes.
Councilman McDermott?
Yes.
Pro Tem Murkowski?
Yes.
Councilwoman Sampe?
Yes.
President Hart?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously for introduction. New business, item four, waive procedure to allow introduction and adoption of manpower budget amendments for fiscal year 2024 within the same meeting. Is there a motion? Motion from Councilman Hersberg, supported from Councilman McDermott. I don't think we need to go through that anymore. So, anything from the maker? Anything from the supporter? Is there any discussion from the council? Any discussion?
I'm very excited.
Any dissent? Do you have discussion or do you have dissent?
Dissent?
Do you, okay, there'll be a roll call then. So, if there's, roll call. Councilwoman Baumann?
Um, I think she had discussion.
Did you have discussion or do you?
No, dissent.
You just wanted dissent, so it's a roll call.
So...
So, we're going to go through and they're going to ask you yes or no?
No.
Councilman Gabbell?
Yes.
Councilman Hersberg?
Yes.
Councilman McDermott?
Yes.
Pro Tem Murkowski?
Uh, yeah, yes.
Councilwoman Sampe? Councilwoman Sampe?
I said dissent.
President Hart?
Yes.
Motion passes. New business, item five, adoption of manpower budget amendments for fiscal year 2024, which is to increase one Assistant Parks and Recreation Director position within the appointed officials and mayor's office and city clerk's pay plan. Is there a motion?
So...
Motion from Councilman Gabbell, supported from Councilman Hersberg. Mr. Block, anything to add? No, good to go. Anything from the maker? Anything from the supporter? Any discussion from the council? Councilwoman Baumann?
I apologize if this has already been asked or answered. How will the amendments, through the chair, how will the amendments actually make this be, I think, I think I heard it was be offset or would it be a non-issue? How will that, how will that happen?
Steve or Dan?
Through the chair, so this agenda item, it states that it's using fund balance. However, when the third quarter budget amendments are presented, it'll basically add fund balance to net the two to zero.
Councilwoman, are you okay?
Is that an, I guess, is that an increase or is that just a wash?
Through the chair, wash.
All set? Okay. Is there any discussion from, Councilwoman Sampe?
Yeah, so I have a question through the chair to finance. We recently just hired a new economic director at 85% of the pay. Can you confirm that that's the case? Because usually when we hire, we hire 85% of the pay for six months. I noticed that the mayor's secretary is 100%. So, it, can you please, through the chair, tell us if we hired at 100? I know it comes in front of council.
So, through the chair...
Yeah, that's, hold on real quick. That's really not involved in the item here that we're talking about. We're talking about the increased Assistant Parks and Recreation Director.
It's together though, isn't it? Yeah.
Okay. So, you have the question?
It says on the memo though, with budget amendments.
It's not related to this item. So, is there any other discussion from the council? Is there any other discussion from the council? I'll go straight to roll call. Councilwoman Baumann? Councilman Gabbell?
Yes.
Councilman Hersberg?
Yes.
Councilman McDermott?
Yes.
Pro Tem Murkowski? You can answer a point of clarification on the motion there.
Okay, perfect. So, according to the motion that's on the table, and I'm sorry, I don't have an agenda in front of me, says adoption of the budget amendments, increase position within the appointed officials and mayor's office and city clerk's pay plan. The pay plan is something that we approve in January. So, are we amending the pay plan and making a budget amendment? Because if we're, because if we're adding something to the mayor's pay plan, that would need to be a separate line item to be voting on as well as the budget constraints. Because we're adding a body to the government that's under that pay plan that's approved by council, which is separate from the actual budget. So, I just wanted the point of clarification to make sure we're procedurally correct.
Through the chair, so the budget amendment, the manpower budget amendment actually adds the position into the budget. The pay plan, I think what you're referring to for the 100% pay?
No.
Okay.
It says within the appointed official and mayor's office, city clerk's pay plan, which the pay plan is the item that we passed in January. We did so two years ago. We'll be coming up on a new one. So, that document outlines the directors that are part of the mayor's administration, right?
That is correct. So, through the chair, the man...
And we're amending that as well, so that we really need to have two different amendments happening because we're amending who's part of the mayor's cabinet, sorry, lack of a better word, and then we're also going to be amending the budget. Because that's how I'm reading it.
Okay.
But I don't think that can be in a concurrent, together.
So, through the chair, through the manpower budget amendment, that, the manpower budget amendment adds that position into the budget and into the pay plan. So, anytime we do a manpower budget amendment, it really doesn't matter what union they're in or anything like that. So, it's, like, say if it's in the fire department, we wouldn't have to go amend the contract in the fire department. We would just do it through the manpower budget amendment that council passes.
Sure, but our public safety numbers are dictated by what we do with our budget or in place of a SAFER grant or a TOPS grant. So, the pay plan to me dictates what, how many bodies serve as part of the administration. The budget just finances that. So, I'll stand with the motion. I just wanted to make sure procedurally that we're making, we're covering both bases. The people serving under the pleasure of the mayor and the money to finance that. That's how I'm reading it. So, if, in fact, the budget amendment adjusts that, but council has voted on that, that seems like two different pieces of legislation, if you will.
Yeah, through the chair, I understand completely what you're saying, but through the manpower budget amendment, it would add it. And the next time the pay plan came up for council's approval, that position would be in there because of the manpower budget and then that, if council were to pass it today.
Okay, sorry, I just wanted clarity on what I was voting on. It's a little indescript from my understanding.
Mr. Clerk? Councilwoman Pro Tem Murkowski?
Yes.
Thank you. Councilwoman Sampe?
Yeah.
President Hart?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. Give me a second. So, we're offering a little grace today with procedure. We got some new folks, and we're all learning to operate... some new folks and we're all learning to operate together. Normally... We're moving a little bit smoother, so I appreciate everybody giving us some grace as well as we move forward. Thank you, Mr. Clerk. All right. We'll move into public comment. Hi. Everyone speaking before the council should do so in a civil manner. Speakers shall refrain from abusive or profane remarks, vulgar language, disruptive outbursts, threats, racial slurs, or other conduct that interferes with the business meeting. Personal attacks on council members, the administration, city staff, other speakers, or members of the public will not be tolerated. The clock will start upon the first words of the speaker and will not stop while the speaker is recognized from the floor. It is the speaker's option to ask questions at this time, and the person questioned may choose to respond during the speaker's allotment of time. However, the clock will not be stopped once it is started. The clock will continue to run until the speaker is completed or their speaking time is exhausted, whichever is first. Is there anyone on my right? Sir?
Edward Pruitt here. First couple of comments. First, congratulations, Mayor Coleman, for your swearing in and being in office. Congratulations, Councilwoman Baumann, for your swearing in as well. This is an awesome moment and awesome change. I did want to bring up about Parks and Rec's Director, Kyle Meligan's statement. I really appreciate the level of transparency and clarity in understanding what's really going on in the department, even the deficiencies. It brings a breath of fresh air, so I thank you for that. I am extremely concerned, and I expected when we got to budget new business items, three, four, and five, that agendas would begin to showcase. We saw that. Even in the last vote, Councilwoman Sampi's last remark was very flippant. Yes. And that's not okay, and that's not professional. The people are looking for change. The people are looking for activities. They're looking for ways to be, have engagement from the government. This was a great opportunity, and I'm glad that it passed. I'm glad that now Parks and Recs can begin to look at additional aspects to be beneficial to the community. I believe, just like Councilman Godbout mentioned, that this was an obstructionist tactic. This hasn't happened for administrations in the past, but now our city council members have to make up their own minds. I'm happy to see the questions being asked, but I'm very concerned with the motives. If we're gonna do it for the best interest of the people, let's remove personal motives out of the way. Let's do it for the best interest of the people. Let's get our egos out of the way. Let's get our pride out of the way, and let's stand for the people. Contentious or discussion or agendas don't do anything to benefit the people. But having discussion back and forth, asking questions, is necessary. We've been asking for that for years now, and now we're starting to see it. I hope these questions continue. The people need to see this level of discussion, and I do want to be clear. The people are brilliant. They're smart, and they can see motives. They can see agendas, and they will see who's doing what. Lastly, I wanted to thank Council President Hart. I was shocked by your response, but I'm thankful as well. So, thank you. I'm glad for this new council.
Thank you, sir. Time's up. Is there anyone on my left? Yes, ma'am. Ruth?
Good evening, everyone. Ruth Dale Westland. I had to make this comment. As most of you remember, several months ago, I made a motion...
Yes, we do.
...to move my chiefs back up to the front where they belong, and tonight I am happy to see that. Thank you, Mayor Coleman. Thank you.
All right, anybody on my right? Yes, ma'am. Sorry. Miss?
Hi, this is Denise Sedman, and I'm a resident of Westland. What I wanted to bring up was something that you're probably not aware of, but it does impact the Parks and Rec, and I thought this would be a perfect opportunity to bring it up. There's a pool called the Dyer Center, and it's been open for at least twenty years. And the center is used for seniors with arthritic problems, and it's also used for special needs kids. I've been in touch with the superintendent of schools and also one of the people in charge of maintenance, and it requires a brand-new HVAC system, because it's the original one, which is $1.5 million. They suggest it would require for restoration. And so, Superintendent, Dr. Digman, he wants to see if there's any other ways we can get funding for this program. Now, if we go forward with the Parks and Rec program that's expanded, I wouldn't mind seeing a millage go through for having this program reinstated, and it could be a one, you know, one-time millage, because the school system's already running the program. That's it.
All right. Thank you. All right. Is there anyone on my left? Lori?
Lori Wilson, Apples Park. Congratulations, Kevin. Congratulations to... Yeah. I just wanted to say happy one-hundredth birthday to Ms. Etina Parker. She will be turning one-hundred years old on November thirtieth. She has been a member of the community. She has worked for the city. She has been the city. She was in the printing office. Ruth, you know all this. She helped us get our historic designation. So, I want to say happy birthday to her, and if anybody gets a chance, give her a call. She appreciates calls and cards and everything like that. So, happy birthday, Ms. Parker.
Thank you. Happy birthday. All right, anybody on my right? Sir?
Good evening, everyone. My name's Brendan Schroeder, and I'm a Dearborn Heights resident and City of Westland employee. I stand before you tonight, as in the spirit of Thanksgiving, I'd like to give thanks. I'd like to give thanks to a public servant who often went thankless in the work that they did. I want to thank them for working their butt off to improve the lives of all the people of Westland. I want to thank them for developing young talent and believing in people that were struggling to believe in themselves. I know I would not be the person I am today without their support, and I will always be thankful for that. I want to thank them for their hard work on bringing a world-class playscape to the city that is accessible to children of all abilities. That playscape's so awesome, it was a finalist for the Michigan Municipal League's Community Excellence Award. I want to thank them for their efforts on the beautification of the Shop &amp; Dine District, which has included new wayfinding signage, new streetlights, and new banners that let you know you're in the City of Westland, and it is a beautiful city. I want to thank them for bringing premium amenities to the city, including the very popular Summer Concert Series. I want to thank them for having the vision to understand what needs to be done in the long run to bring positive change to the City of Westland. Bringing about this type of change is not and cannot be only a short-term effort. I want to thank them for creating a plan that will guide development in the city for years to come. I want to thank them for being a shining star, one so bright that people across the city's political spectrum understood how talented they are and were always quick to compliment them. I've witnessed firsthand people come into an issue strongly opposed to it, and after hearing this person speak on it, they were suddenly in support. I want to thank this person for believing that brighter futures are built on bold action. The annex at Nantkin going in next door, that is one such action, as it will be a catalyst for redevelopment around the Westland Mall. I want to thank them for having done so much that I can't possibly thank them in the three minutes I have before you tonight. The person that I've been speaking about tonight is the city's former Economic Development Director, Aubrey Marab. Aubrey, thank you for your service to the City of Westland and all of its people, even when some only sought to tear you down. Wherever you go next, I know you will do incredible things and blow us all away. Aubrey is so much more than what some people have tried to unfairly label her as, and I just wish more people had been willing to see her as she is. In closing, I'd like to congratulate the city's new Economic Development Director, Alex Garza. Hi, Alex. And I look forward to working with you, as well as our fantastic Business Retention and Expansion Coordinator, Kayla Cabetto, as well as Mayor Coleman and the rest of his administration, to continue improving the lives of Westland's residents and businesses and building a stronger Westland together. Thank you for all your time, and I hope you all have a great Thanksgiving.
Thank you. All right. Anybody on my left? Yes.
That's a tough act to follow. Okay, hi. Hi, everyone. Good evening. Christina Worm, Westland citizen, Norraine resident, and the Chair of the Norraine Community Citizens Council. Just wanted to take the opportunity to invite the community to our holiday tree-lating coming up Wednesday, November twenty-ninth, from six to seven-thirty. Would love to see the council there. We're going to have a cocoa bar. We have cookies. We have the best Santa in all the land. So, if everyone would like to come and see him, rumor is he's gonna come in on a fire truck, so that's always exciting. And we also, the children get free stockings from Santa and goodies, so it's a lot of fun. And again, with our community partners, it's always free. I did want to also take another moment. It does, we do have nonprofit fields that are beautiful fields that have been completely restored. I don't know if too many people are familiar with them. They are at the Jefferson Barnes Community Vitality Center. We do not have any nonprofits attached to them. They sit there pretty underutilized, and so it would be wonderful to have the Parks and Rec Department find programs to bring to those fields. Also, it becomes disheartening to hear we don't have a community center. We don't have a rec center, because we do have the Jefferson Barnes Community Vitality Center, which has a lot of opportunity in it. We have a ton of programs running out of there and for all ages. And I do also hope that we can start to include more teen programs within the community. It just seems to be like our tweens kind of get lost in the mix, and you really don't see... I'm involved in a number of communities, and it seems to be missed in a lot of communities. So, hopefully, we can get some things coming out of there. But please, just a gentle reminder to remember the Jefferson Barnes Community Vitality Center and all that we offer within the Norraine Historic District. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Anybody on my right? Yes, ma'am.
Yes, I was wondering. I go for a walk quite frequently in my neighborhood, and when I go for my walk, there is a sidewalk on my street, a section that's about six inches raised. So, I was so excited when I heard about the free sidewalk program that Westland was doing. In fact, I talked to a couple council members about my concern, because I have to walk on the person's lawn. And I was just wondering, of course, it wasn't fixed, are we gonna continue with our free program of repairing our sidewalks? Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Anyone on my left? Ray?
Oh, Ray. So, anyway, I got a lot to be thankful, hell, not hearing that guy over there from Dearborn Heights, you know. It's good to be... A lot of times, we all need to think about, let's be thankful, the things that we are doing, and I would like to see people start working together, start battering back and forth, because there isn't, it doesn't do any good. So, I like to keep it positive. So, hopefully, my three minutes should be... Anyway, you know, the most important thing to me, you all know it, is mental health awareness. That means it's important to me. It's the holidays are approaching. So, it says, "The holiday season can be difficult." It can be difficult with people losing their loved ones. It could be different things going on with them and stuff. So, there is twenty-four-seven. Text nine-eight-eight or chat with the online at nine-eight-eight lifeline.org. I love it. And also, I want to say, Melissa, congratulations. And Mike and Kevin, nice working with you. I can't think of your name right now, but you know, so I'm just... Also, we had a meeting tonight as our disability acacy community member here, Chair. We are going places. Things are happening. So, what we are doing, we're reaching out with our goals next year, like, you know, we want to reach out to different places, like, you know, where we can all resource together, like maybe Dearborn, maybe I'm, and me as busy as a Chair, I picked Lisa, awesome, to work with me. So, she's gonna do some work, and I'm gonna do like maybe three different city council meetings that I'm gonna go to, just to tell who I am and what we do as a disability acacy. And I want to make sure that people are being treated equal and has the right to be in the community. So, anyway, I want to wish the fire department a very happy Thanksgiving. Also, the police department and the police chief, happy Thanksgiving, and the rest of you, happy Thanksgiving. And let's be thankful, because you don't know what it's gonna bring us tomorrow. What tells me is we need to be kind to one another, because we don't know what people are going through. I want to say thank you.
Thanks, Ray. All right. Is there anybody on my right? Anybody? Whoop, I just saw a couple hands pop up. There you are.
Yep. Hello, Sebastian Cooper, Westland resident. I was just giving some thoughts about the discussion about the Parks and Recreation needs, and I guess I'm relatively new to the city, but I'm from Dearborn. But I just kind of wonder how we've gotten to this point where we're the second-largest city with the most amount of parks behind Detroit, and apparently, we're just insufficient in terms of the number of resources and people required. So, how do we get to a point where we don't even know what resources that we need in terms of personnel, to where we have to say, "Well, we need to do a study session about that?" So, that's my question, something just to think openly about in terms of sustainability going forward, in terms of the personnel that we're gonna eventually need. So, that's just my thought. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody on my left? Sir?
Hi, everybody. Derek here. I'm your resident dog advocate. December the sixteenth, I'm gonna be doing a Home for the Holiday, and I don't know whether it's good or bad, but Karen, the owner of Hometown Pets, has once again given me the blessing to use her business to do so. We are gonna have wonderful dogs available for adoption from Detroit Animal Care and Control that'll be available that day. We're also gonna be highlighting some special dogs that are in need of homes at the Michigan Humane Society. And then our third option, if you're so inclined, we're actually gonna be hosting the Buster Foundation, which actually pulls dogs from all over the state that wouldn't necessarily have a second chance at life, and helps rehabilitate them. They have a bit more of an approval process, so you won't be able to take the dog home that day, but if you're looking for a really good dog, they'll be there. Anyway, I digress. On top of that, we're gonna be collecting donations for all three of these charities. That includes Detroit Animal Care and Control, as well as Michigan Humane, and the Buster Foundation. Each, right now, has specific needs that are different, and the last few times that we have done these fundraisers, we end up getting a lot of everything that some foundations need and others don't. So, we're gonna split everything up so that everybody gets exactly what they need. We're also gonna be holding a wonderful fair, helping people make sure that all of the microchips on their dogs are up to date for their addresses, encouraging them to get the local city tags, and showing them wonderful ways to have your pet tagged and licensed and honestly addressed, because it is so hard as someone who spends time rescuing and dealing with dogs, when we have a beautiful, wonderful dog that you know has an absolutely loving home and no microchip. Or even worse, the same beautiful, wonderful dog has a microchip, but the address hasn't been updated since 2006. So, we're gonna be holding these things, helping you get in touch with the local places that you might have gotten these microchips, ensuring the fact that these are updated. And honestly, I encourage all of you to use your platforms to stress the importance of having these dogs tagged, having licenses with addresses up to date. of having these dogs tagged, having licenses with addresses up to date, that it is, it is so much easier to find homes and to find and reconnect these people with their loved dogs and stuff like that when these things are open. And it is sometimes things that slip our mind. We move, we rent a different place, we buy a house, and just forget that five years ago, Fido, we rescued Fido, and you know, and when we get this dog, the dog has no way. So anyway, so we'll have lots of resources available for you to do that. We're going to have services available if you're in need of assistance, so you'll be able to, food, medications, chipping, whatever you need. So 968-NORTH-NEWBURG, December the 16th, from 11:00 to 2:00. And again, congratulations to both Councilwoman Baumann and Mayor Coleman. Have a great day.
Thank you.[644.04][644.04](APPLAUSE). Is there anybody on my right? Sir?
My name is Burke Rock. I'd like to welcome our new mayor, Kevin Coleman. It's a breath of fresh air. I'd like to thank you for the six or seven million you got to this, you got through the state for Westland improvement on the two fire stations. We've had antiquated fire stations. They're back from the 50s and 60s. It's almost a shambles. We have no performing arts center. It's mockery. Our ice skating rink, we keep putting money into it. We need a new ice skating rink. We need a, we need facilities for gym. Our previous mayor, before the last one that lost the election, he's not really told any of the council members, but if you look in the budget, we're hundreds of millions of dollars in debt. And it's mainly for excessive pensions, letting people retire after 20 years and receiving more than, and pension than what they were making. Anyhow, we have, this new mayor has a lot, a lot on his plate, and it's up to you council members to support him. We're all in the same boat together, and from what I see, we're sort of like in the Titanic. We have, we have about a billion holes in the ship. In fact, over the next hundred years, we're going to be paying out a billion dollars in excess of pensions that we should not have to be paying. The other thing I'm concerned about is our water bills. The Water Department's the largest department now in the city. It's $40 million, and there's so much money going down the drain, it's pathetic. I was in City Hall a few years back to pay a water bill, and there's a lady out in the hall, about 30 years old, she was crying. I went up to her, and I said, "What's wrong?" And she said, this was in February, she said, "My water bills are so high." And I said, "Do you have a big family?" And she said, "No, I only have two children," and she was crying like a baby. I couldn't believe it. Then another time, I went to City Hall, and I was paying the bill at the counter, and there's a lady up there, and she was talking to the city clerk, and she, not the city clerk, but the person she was paying. She said, "If I could, I'd dig a well in my backyard." And I was behind her, and I thought, amen. The other thing, our, our interest on late payments for water, it's extortionistic. I figured out, it's about 60% if you compound it over a year. And I looked in the budget, they made a million dollars on interest alone. Now, we should have, with a $40 million water budget, we should have enough budget, money in there to sustain money in case people are late. Our utilities, you look at your utility bills, they don't charge you interest. It's the same as when you paid the last time. It's outrageous.
Okay, sir, your time's up. Thank you. Hey, is there anybody on my left? Mr. Warren?
Arthur Warren, Westland resident. One thing I want to say about your new administration is that the cookies and cakes out there are a lot better than the last administration.[876.19][876.19](LAUGHTER). Now to get down to the serious business. From time to time, the city lends its good name to public events. And this last public event, from my understanding, the veterans think that certain people were denied participation based upon their political choices. And I just hope that the administration, when these events come to the administration and asking for that support or the advertisement, that you ensure that they do not discriminate on the basis of one's politics, race, sexual preference, or anything of that nature, because that should not be tolerated, just because one made a choice to vote for another person. And it's a sad situation, because Ms. Wilson came to you and launched that complaint, and nobody got back to her. Mr. Dan Statchild got to you with that, those concerns, and got back to you. And nobody got back to him in regards to those kinds of things. So I would like the administration, when these events come to you, no matter what they are, that it gives assurance that every citizen who wants to volunteer or attend has the, has the privilege to attend those events before you lend your name, good name of this administration, out to them. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there anybody on my right? Sir?
I'm not supposed to speak again. I have a job to do here.
Ooh, you need that.
Hello, Josh Powell, Water Tower Advocate. I just, I had the same questions as I normally do, if there's been any movement on the, getting a, the study money allocated, and if there's any movement on the water tower. Additionally, I was welcome to the Councilwoman Baumann and Mayor Coleman. And I also want to know if there is any, I know the mayor put out a statement regarding the power outage, but I didn't know if there is any, if there's going to be a new, I guess, partnership or line of communication to get us more information on, on the power issues we have, because I was also without power two more days since the last council meeting. So that would be great if we could get some more communication, at least communication on that, so we can get a good estimate of when we get our power back. But I think the water tower, I mean, the previous gentleman spoke about, and I, full disclosure, I didn't talk to him beforehand, so, but I think a lot of people are feeling the, I have elderly neighbors, and I had to lend them some money to help with their water payment, because they weren't able to pay it as well. So I think it's an important issue that should be brought up to the forefront. That's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is anybody on my left? All right. Is there anybody on my right? Yes.
Hi, my name is Lisa Krzynski, and I'm a 10-year Westland resident and homeowner. I'm also a student nurse right now at Schoolcraft College, and I am a volunteer vice chair for the Disability Advocacy Commission here in Westland for a little bit over two years now. I also wanted to say a big congratulations to our new mayor, Kevin Coleman, and new City Councilwoman, Emily Baumann. I just wanted to let you guys know that today I found out that Westland has 11.9% of their 65 and under are disabled. I didn't know that. That averages out, I found out, to about 10,000 of our residents. So I feel that it's very important for us to, this year, when the Disability Commission, when we set our goals for this new year, to reach out and communicate to the public more. We need to do more community outreach, I believe. And we thought of some ways to do that. One, we thought maybe a bookmark with our upcoming information of our meetings, since they are public. Put that on the bookmarks, leave them at City Hall, leave them at the library. People can take them, and then they can come to our commission and give us their suggestions and ideas and any comments that they may have, because we welcome that. And I also wanted to let everyone know here tonight that I do have, that all of us worked on, a community resources handout, because I know that even if you might not need something, you might know someone that does need some resources through the city. And we have worked hard to consolidate most of the community resources onto one page front and back. I also wanted to thank our DEI Director, Pashal Eazy, Nicole Jones, and all of the DAC commissioners for working hard this year and for the year to come. If you have any questions, please feel free to come to me or Ray, any questions that you may have. And lastly, I just wanted to mention again that all of our meetings, we're also known as DAC, they're open to the public, so we really do welcome everyone. And I wanted to leave everyone with this comment. This city does have a lot of potential, and I do believe that we have more in common than we have different, than we are different, but we just think that there are different ways to get there. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other comment? Anyone else in the audience? Sir?
Thank you, Council President. For everyone that don't know me, my name is Delano Hornbuckle. It's important for me to be here today, not only to thank everyone here, let you know I appreciate working with you for the last nine, eight months, but also to congratulate you on your win. It's very important to me to be here today to congratulate you, Emily. Also, Kevin Coleman, congratulations on your win as well. I just want you, everyone here to know, and the audience at home, I'm still here. I think the clerk said it the best. I'm here to serve, and I'm here available to help each and every one of you, no matter what it is. And Kevin Coleman, together to be strong. First, we need to make sure we stay together to be strong. Thank you.[1281.83][1281.83](APPLAUSE).
Is there any other comment? All right, I'm going to close public comment, and at this time, I'm going to set a 10-minute recess. One 10-minute recess. Please be ready back in your seats at 8:27. Thank you. I'm calling this meeting back to order. And we will move to comments from the administration. Mayor?
Thank you, Council President. Thank you, City Council. I just want to thank everybody who came to the inauguration ceremony for Councilwoman Baumann and myself. It meant a lot to have so many members of the community there. I'm honored to serve as mayor. I absolutely put my heart into my campaign. I want to thank everybody who supported me and voted for me. It really meant the world to me. I won't let you down. I'm going to work very hard and work with the City Council here, city staff, everybody in our community, to do the best that I can do and get great results for you. So I'm excited to be here, haven't sat up here in six years since I was on the City Council, and want to thank my immediate office staff, Shannon, Jackie, all the directors. I've spent a lot of time with you the last few days, and I was sworn in officially by the city clerk last Monday night. The results of this election had to take effect immediately, because it was a special election. So as soon as those results were certified by Wayne County, I was sworn in and took over duties as mayor, really without much of a transition at all. So I want to just thank the city staff for being so cooperative and so helpful towards me. It's meant a lot to me. Next, I want to congratulate Councilman Michael McDermott, Andrea Radkowski, President Pro Tem Andrea Radkowski, Councilwoman Melissa Sampe. Great win, great, great passionate campaigns. Just want to congratulate you on your reelection. And then also, Councilwoman Baumann, congratulations. I know you're a new member. I know how it feels to be a new member of the council back 10 years ago when I first got on City Council. It was a lot, but I'm really looking forward to working with you and seeing if we can do some great stuff together. So congrats, and I know your family's very proud of you. I want to introduce one new member of our administration. I did already make one new hire. We have a new Economic Development Director. His name is Alex Garza. So welcome, Alex Garza, to the team. And I, and I won't go on and on and say too much, but I just want to say I'm looking forward to working with you. I know you've already gotten your feet wet today, met, meeting with city staff and your immediate staff. Alex holds business degrees in business management, political science, and public policy. He's a former mayor pro tem of the city of Taylor. He served as state representative for two terms in the Michigan House of Representatives. He most recently served as a staff member for the Speaker of the House for the state of Michigan. He comes with a range of business experience. He's been on the Regulatory Reform Committee in Lansing. But what I appreciate most about Alex is his willingness to communicate with everybody, be clear and direct, and work well with, with others. He also has a great relationship with a lot of our business community. So as Economic Development Director, I'm going to be putting a lot on his plate. I already am. But I know he has a great relationship with our Regional Chamber of Commerce and other business organizations statewide. So he brings a lot of that knowledge and connection to the table. He's got great relationships with leadership, whether it be in Washington DC, the governor's office, and all the way down. So I'm just excited to work with Alex and bring him on board. Next, I want to just talk about a few things. I got a whole list here, and I'm not usually long-winded, but this being my first meeting, I have a few things I just kind of, kind of have to say. Friday, the city experienced another power outage. A lot of you are aware, were aware that a whole section of our city, and especially a lot of these major intersections around Newburgh, Ford Road, Warren, Central City, there was a power outage. DTE reached out to me immediately. They let me know what the issue was. There was a large tree that had died, and they showed me pictures. A big dead tree fell right into one of the main lines. It's a 40,000-volt line, and it took out several distribution circuits. So what I did was I immediately contacted the police chief and the Director of Public Services. I asked them to install four-way stop signs at the major intersections that were without power, and to keep an eye on those intersections for people's safety. On Saturday, DTE had to close Ford Road to do some repairs to the line. So they closed Ford Road for a few hours between Hicks and Newburgh, and I understand that they got everything fixed. Power outages have been something that our communities talked a lot about. I'm going to be sitting down with DTE very soon, along with our professionals here at the city, to see what we can do as far as improving the situation, especially going into the winter time. I want to just touch base on the Department of Public Service. You know, we've talked, we've decided to expand the leaf pickup program to dirt roads. I know before, there was talk of not having the dirt roads included. The DPS is going to be doing the leaf pickup for the, the few dirt roads that we still have in the city in-house, so the DPS employees will be coming by and getting your leaves. I had, somebody called me today, who said, "Well, I heard that they weren't doing dirt roads, but now there's a sign out." If you see a sign out, and that's the leaf pickup time that's scheduled, go ahead, put your leaves out, and we'll, we'll get them picked up. I just want to touch on this. City offices will be closed this Thursday and Friday in observance of Thanksgiving. Hope everybody has a great Thanksgiving, and you get to have some fun. I'd like to invite everyone to our annual holiday celebration here at City Hall. It's going to be on Tuesday, December 5th, from 5:30 to 7:30 PM. Santa Claus and Mrs. Claus will be here to welcome the holiday season. Kids can sit on Santa's lap to have their photo taken and tell Santa the one item they want the most, and make a wish. There will be cookies and ornament decorating, letters to Santa, and much more. And then just a, kind of a matter of procedure, you know, I don't necessarily want to go through every speaker on every council meeting, so I would just ask the public, if you come to council and you want to have me respond, just address me, so I know that you're addressing me as opposed to maybe the council. That way, I have that clarity. Tonight, I'll touch just on a few speakers. I won't get to all of them, because I don't want to take up the council's time here. Mr. Warren, you spoke of people being left out of things or discriminated against for a variety of things, including their political affiliation or who they chose to vote for. I can tell you right now, under my administration, we will not tolerate excluding people based on who they vote for. I've already made it clear, and I'll make it clear right now, if city employees in the next election decide, if I decide to run again and they don't support me, they will not be punished, they won't, nothing will be held against them. There will be no bullying and no intimidation. So that's just not going to happen, and I don't want any city employees to think that that's okay. So that just won't happen. Lisa and Ray from the Disability Concerns Committee, thank you for coming out tonight. I just want to say I appreciate what you do. Ray, I had mentioned to you that we're going to get ahold of you and have a meeting with you, so we can talk about what you're working on, and congratulations on being the Chair of that committee once again. Christina Worm, I want to just say thank you to everything you've done for the Norwaine community. The Norwaine Community Citizens Council does a lot, a lot of great work, volunteer work down in Norwaine, which is an important historic part of our city. There's a lot of need in our community, and I just appreciate all they do to help other people. One of the things I was most proud of on my time on the City Council years ago was supporting Mayor Wild's vision of opening that Jefferson Barnes Community Vitality Center. I think there's a lot of potential there. We can do even more there, and I just want to thank the Community Citizens Council for your, your hard work and everything you do for the community. Maureen Davison, I know you mentioned the sidewalk program. I don't know if you're still here, but just to let you know, if you're watching the meeting tonight, I tonight, I, I'm going to be talking with the council and with our staff about the future of the sidewalk program. I, I got to tell you, having come in to this role in just a week going by, we've done a lot of meetings on the budget and the finances of the city, but I want to make sure there's support and the finances there to, to move forward in the best way appropriate. So that's something we're going to take a look at, and I'm sure we'll be talking to City Council about. So I know that's not a yes or no answer, but we will, they're not doing, my understanding is, is in the winter time, they won't be doing the concrete pouring anyway, so we'll definitely know how we're going to proceed by next construction year. Other than that, I just want to thank the City Council for supporting the addition of the Assistant Director for Parks and Recreation. I know there was a lot of discussion. I appreciate you giving me some good faith and some room to get staff in place and get some of our great program, great programming and my vision for our parks and recreation together. This is going to really help Kyle. I, I got to tell you, I've been really impressed with Kyle. I've spent a lot of time with him the last week. I think he's a hard worker. He's got a great vision for our city, and I, I just want to get him the support and the help he needs to, to succeed in this role, and I'm really looking forward to working with everybody here. But I, I wanted to shout him out in particular because I was just really impressed with his hard work. And thank you for the presentation tonight. That went great. And then lastly, I'll just say thank you to the city staff. Thank you for being so welcoming and working well with me. Thank you for, to our police department and our fire department for your hard work. You got my respect and my support. And there's probably a lot I'll, I'll think of that I wish I would have said, but I'm going to call it there, and I'll, I'll look forward to seeing everybody soon. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Anything from the attorney's office today?
Just briefly, I'll say good evening. Congratulations to our newly elected officials. Happy Thanksgiving to everybody, and no, no other legal comments. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll begin council comments this evening with Councilman Michael McDermott.
Boy, okay, I know Richard's timing me. First off, I, I want to start out by saying a round of thank yous. Thank you to everyone in Westland who, and I know that we haven't officially started the new term yet, and I'll have more comments about that later, but thank you to everybody in Westland who came out to vote. Whether you voted for me or not, thank you for participating in your democracy and proving that this is not a spectator sport. I appreciate each and every person that did come out and cast the ballot and vote, and if you did vote for me, thank you for that. I appreciate your support and believing in me and wanting to keep me up here to work with my colleagues, work with the administration, and work to serve you here in the community. And, you know, as I always say, the FDR quote, "The test of our progress is not whether we take care of those who have much, but whether we take care of those who have too little." And I truly hope that I can continue to live by that quote. And, you know, I believe our job is to improve your quality of life, to lift it up, to take care of those in marginalized communities, and make sure that we are doing the best job that we can for you. So it's truly humbling. It's, it's truly an honor to get to serve with my colleagues and to get to serve all of you here in the community. So to everyone who voted, thank you. Even if you voted for somebody else that's up here or not, it's, it's humbling and honoring to, to have your continued support, and thank you for participating in, in your democracy. I want to congratulate our newly elected Mayor Coleman, newly elected colleague here who is now my neighbor, Councilwoman Baumann. Congratulations on your victories and the people in Westland believing in you and all the hard work that each of you put into your respective campaigns. I look forward to serving with each of you and wish you all the best success and always know, I know that you've been up here, but always a resource if anything you need. For being a newly elected Councilwoman, you've got my phone number, call, text, anything you need. There's no such thing as a dumb question. There's no such thing as too many questions. If you need anything, I'm a resource. Please use me, and I wish you best of luck and look forward to serving with you and having you as my neighbor up here on the dais. I want to congratulate each of my colleagues who are returning to City Council. Our, first off, our clerk, Mr. LeBlanc, I know he was unopposed, but still, thank you for running a great election. Thank you for your election staff for, for all that they do. Really a tremendous job, especially now with the expanded voting proposal, too. We added a lot onto their plate, and with the early voting, I mean, a crazy amount of work. If you really saw all the behind-the-scenes stuff. So thank you to the clerk's office, to Deputy Clerk Inman, to everybody who worked a polling location. Again, we say democracy isn't a spectator sport, but we cannot do this without all your hard work. And congratulations, Mr. Clerk, on your reelection. Look forward to continuing to work with you. To my colleagues, Council President Protem Radkowski and Councilwoman Sampe, congratulations on well-deserved victories. You both ran positive, you know, hard campaigns, and I think that really the work you've done up until this point is what really makes people believe in you. So congratulations. I look forward to serving with you as well. And to everybody that put their hat into to run, to my colleague and neighbor, Councilman Hornbuckle, to Mr. Pruitt, to Mr. Powell, to former Mayor Lando, everybody that put their hat in, in the name, in the ring to run. It's, it's not easy, and having lost a race before, I, I know how that feels, but thank you for running. Thank you for working to try and make the community better. We appreciate you running and staying involved to try and make a difference here in the community as well. It was already said about the Norwayan tree lighting, so I won't go into that. I do want to remind folks about the St. Louis Truck Event that is coming up. It is going to be on the 24th. That is from 10:00 to 2:00 PM up at Meyer. So the location did change this year. You remember last year it was in front of Crunch Fitness. This year, it will be on the 24th, 11:24 from 10:00 to 2:00 PM. This is a really great event that our Westland Police put on to support our Westland Goodfellas No Kid Without a Christmas operation. So please come out with a newer unwrapped toy. Don't forget about the older kids as well. I know a lot of folks bring stuff for the, you know, four, five, six, seven-year-old kids, but don't forget about the older kids. They want something to open and unwrap on Christmas as well. So thank you to the police department for putting that one on as well. I want to thank all of our holiday winners, Melanie Smith, Austin Schuyler, and Matt Sutella on some great holiday displays, and all those who are runner-ups. Thank you for participating in that as well. Another round of thank yous. I want to thank our DPS Director, Ramsey Algarib, and our Water and Sewer Director, Doug Morton. I've kind of hit them with a couple of different items the last few weeks, and they've been super quick and super responsive to the residents who've had inquiries from me and questions that I couldn't answer. So we have a very professional staff here, and Director Algarib and Director Morton. Thank you for being on top of that and getting back so quickly. I very much appreciate that. And thank you to everyone in DPS who's going to go out there and take care of some of those issues. I want to thank our Deputy Police Chief, Deputy Chief Kummer, Sergeant Paris, and Officer Kelly for a couple of issues that I've reached out to them with lately. Thank you all for getting back so quickly with the residents. Most of all, I mean, it's ultimately, I'm reaching out, but they're the ones with the issues, and I appreciate a number of recent issues that you guys have been really quick to take care of, and I know the residents certainly appreciate that as well. Happy birthday to Ms. Parker, 100 years old. So a very happy birthday to you. Just a couple of other things. I want to welcome Director Alex Garza, our new Economic Development Director. Look forward to working with you. I know you quite well from a number of years, but we're excited to have you on board, and thank you to the former Economic Development Director, Director Aubrey Merritt, for all the work that she did, really advancing this department, putting another huge Economic Development Master Plan among so many other things. So thank you for your service to the city as well. I know that it was talked about going to see Santa at the Norwayan event. I will be asking Santa for a responsible contractor ordinance, among many other things that we've been asking for, the water tower, pre-planning program, restarting the walk-in roll and the sidewalk connectivity. I only get one, but I guess I'll make it responsible contracting this year under the tree. Thank you, Mayor, for bringing up DTE. This is an issue that many of us here have hit time and again, so I appreciate the responsiveness on that. I think it's time for a public power initiative, but I'll save, I'll spare you all going into a soliloquy on that. Last two things that I will say is, number one, we have a very important game coming up this weekend, go Blue. We have a chance at an undefeated season, so go Blue and beat the team from down south. And then number two, go Lions on Thanksgiving, and I wish you all a very happy and healthy Thanksgiving with all of your families or whoever you are spending the holidays with. Have a wonderful, joyous, happy, healthy Thanksgiving, and as Ray always reminds us, treat each other with respect. Thank you.
All set?
All set.
Okay. It's not your, it's not your worst, but ain't your best. Keep an eye on it.
Rough crowd.
Councilwoman Baumann.
Welcome.
This is where you talk to people.
Just kidding, that's right. So I don't get cut off?
Yep.
Wow.
I mean, we might walk out, but...
I don't know. Today will be the day I challenge Councilman McDermott, but there might be some days that I do. So first, I just want to say thank you to my husband for doing the oath today. I know that it is, it's a really big honor. I mean, actually, because, actually, because Mayor Coleman chose the Supreme Court Justice, it's a really big honor to be able to do the oath, and I, and I, not that decisions are, it was one of those things like, who do I do, and who do I use? And I just want to say thank you to my husband for actually doing that tonight. It was very appreciative. And to my family for who's supported me these last couple of years to, to actually get to this point. And I also want to thank the voters, and all of the Westland, because I wouldn't be here if it weren't for the city, if it weren't for the people that went out to vote, and I, I hope, I, well, I hope and I plan to bring honor to not only this position, but to the people of Westland, and that you feel that you can work with me regardless of what it is. So just so, so you know that I, I want to be available to people, and I will. And so I just want to thank the city of Westland and all the voters that came out, and, and I want to thank my new colleagues for the welcome that they've given me and support that they've offered. I really appreciate that because it's, it's a, it's a big deal to, as Councilman McDerm- or Hornbuckle knows, it's, it's, it's new to be up here, and it's, it's big to have that support. So thank you. I would like to congratulate also Mayor and Protem Radkowski and Councilwoman Sampe and Councilman McDermott and our new, our new clerk.
Nice to meet you.
All right, come on. So, so congratulations, because it's, yeah, and all your re-elections as well. So thank you. Let's see. I want to congratulate, happy birthday to Etna Parker on her 100-year-old, 100-year birthday. Thank you. Thank you for bringing that to our attention. I think that's actually really, that's, that's so always wonderful. And to our Halloween winners, Michelle Smith, Austin Schuyler, Matt Sutella. I want to congratulate them on that. I noticed that one of, the one in my neighborhood did not get, did not get an award this year. They did a couple of years ago, but hopefully people came and visited, because that one definitely was a little over, more over the top this year than I've seen in, in years. That's the one on Stacy Street. A couple of years ago, they got, they got the award, but, and I know some people were out there over the last couple of months, too. So I would like to, let's see, I'm not sure what I want to do. Congratulations to Alex Garza for your appointment as well. And I think, thank you to Aubrey for, for her service to Westland. I also, I want to include that, too, because I did get a chance to meet her, Aubrey, several times over the last couple of years, and I want to thank her for her service for that. And I think the last thing I'm going to just mention is, that I have on here, is that I, while I am here for the first time, I will not be here on the December 4th meeting. I actually will be in Rochester, New York. I had mentioned it briefly before the election, but my sister has colon cancer. I think I said someone I know. I don't know if I said my sister, but my sister has colon cancer, and her final chemotherapy appointment is December 4th. So I will not be at that meeting. So I just want the people, residents, to know that it's, it's not for, it's not for not wanting to be here, but I, I know that that's the most important thing for me to do right now is to be there for her final chemo treatment. And she even asked me, as soon as I got elected, she's like, "You can come still, right?" And I said, "Yes, Beverly." I made that comment, I made that commitment to you. I will be there as long as I need to be there for you. So, so I will not be here for that. And in light of that, I am going to give my number. I had to decide on a number. Anyone who has my Colorado 303 number, keep it, it's still good. But my official number that you, will also be a direct number to me, is 734-224-3679. So please, I actually have about four numbers that will reach me pretty directly, but that's going to be the official one that I'm going to use for, for council. So 734, 734-224-3679 is the number you can use. And like I said, if you already have the 303 number with my, which is from Denver, because we used to live in Colorado, don't give it up. I still use it. So, and I think that's all for me tonight.
All right, thank you, and welcome, welcome. We'll move over to Councilman Hersberg.
Thank you, Council President. I'll be brief tonight. It was a pretty long meeting, pretty good meeting, I think. It could have been better. I'm really interested in this discussion we're having on the parks and seeing a lot of the passion from the council members. I mean, you saw that a lot of us wanted to vote this way or do something different. So I'm really glad that we all have that focus on the parks, because we need to do more in this city for the city's youth. I'd like to have a study session, open-ended, just on our parks and future programming in relation to this new position. And a sports dome. You know, that was brought up by a couple of council members. That's, that's big. That's a big project. I don't know if we'll do that, but maybe there's room for it with the ARPA funds, maybe there's room for it with a partnership, maybe there's room to do it with a bond. Year-round recreation in this city has been lost for so long. And actually, somebody asked at Citizens Comments, "How did we get to this point?" It wasn't overnight. It started in the recession. Our director had left for another job. We bulldozed the rec center, as I said before. For a while there, we actually had a, I want to say two parks directors, where one quit after a few months. One was here for eight or 10 months and couldn't pass the certification, and then we just had a vacancy for a couple of years until we brought Kyle on. I'm sorry, we had Brian Harnos there for a year or two, which he ended up leaving as well for another job, and then we brought Kyle on. And I like the work that Kyle has done. He's responsive to the residents that come in. He listens, he calls people back. I think he has a genuine interest in making our Parks Department the best it can be. So I do want to have that study session on the parks. It was brought up tonight about Jefferson Barnes. They have fields that aren't being really used. The Dyer Center, council's talked about that, and working with the schools for, for that. The sports dome, again, future programming, so that, that might not be what we decide, but getting that community engagement process going and just doing something more, because we've really gone downhill over the last about 14 years in our Parks Department, and there's a lot we can do. So I'd like to have a study session with everybody. If we're all passionate about it and want to do something, let's, let's do it. I'd like to have early budget meetings as well, because that kind of goes along the same lines of what's going to come up in the budget. Typically, we vote on the budget at the last moment where we legally can adopt the budget. I'd like to do that a meeting ahead of time this year. That way, if there are changes, if, if some council members are, aren't, if it's not sitting right with them, we can get those changes in and do it and not come into the council meeting and say, "Well, we have to vote on it tonight." There's no choice. So I'm looking forward to a lot more discussion, period. So congratulations, Mayor Coleman. Congratulations, Emily, and all the candidates who ran for office. I'm looking forward to working with you, Emily. I know you ran on your own. Nobody recruited you to run. You've ran for office before, and you stuck to it, and you made it the old, the old-school way. You know, there's no other way to say it. You kept coming to council meetings for a few years now. I think you're well-prepared to join us here on council. I also want to welcome Alex Garza as our new Economic Development Director. I, I'm going to reach out to you and try to set up a meeting with you for Friday. I do have some ideas, some things that, that could be done a little bit better, so just looking forward to meeting with you and talking with you. I think that's about it. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilwoman Sampe.
Thank you, Council President. I hope everyone's doing well. Contentious meeting, but I think good discussion. So I wanted to start by congratulating all the new faces, well, not all the new faces, two new faces, returning faces, so Mayor Coleman and Councilwoman Baumann. I appreciate, you know, both of your campaigns and, you know, we look forward to working with you both. To the economic director, Alex Garza, I think that you'll probably be sitting on the city's master steering plan. Master plan, yes. I think you'll be sitting on it with me as well, so I look forward to working with you more closely. And also, I'm not sure if Aubrey's going to watch this back, but thanking her for her service as well. Wanted to thank the residents who continue to support me. I did receive a two-year term, so we're completing our terms. So I was elected to a four-year term. So for, for my, my family, too, we, we appreciate service and I really appreciate everyone's support and all the residents that I met over the course of the campaign as well, too. A lot of outreach, a lot of conversations and a lot of great, just a lot of great momentum. So I wanted to thank everyone. It was brought up that I was, I was trying to buy resident obstruction of tactics. I just wanted to let you guys know that is absolutely not the case. I actually spoke to Mayor Coleman twice on the phone in a very lengthy conversation, and it was actually more a passion for my Parks and Rec. So I had talked with him about ideas and we had talked actually on the break, and I think it's more or less, I want to understand from Kyle, and he's shaking his head because I spoke to Kyle, what else do you need as an overall plan? Where can we program Jefferson Barnes? Where can we program at all of our facilities as a comprehensive look at what we can offer? So what I felt is that we weren't necessarily ready for a body until we could allocate money to actually do the, the programming. So that's why I had asked Kyle, like, hey, can we learn your needs first before we just hire a body and then from there figure out where the money is to actually fund the program? So it was not obstruction of tactics. Like I said, Mayor Coleman understood my point of view. He said, "I get it, I understand," which is why I really wanted to go into a study session and, you know, spoke with my colleague, too. And I think we still need to. I think we still need to understand how we can program or support you. It might be one body, it may be three. I don't, I don't know what it is for your vision, but we want to support it. And I just want you to know that from my heart, I want to support it, too, because it means a lot to me. So I'm an athletic mom and it's important to me that kids all throughout the city get recreation, adults, seniors, everywhere. Where can we program? So I just want you to know that, that it wasn't me being negative by any means. It's, I support you and I support the development of Parks and Rec. And I really hope that we can develop some awesome programming, because I agree, we need it and we need it bad. So I just wanted to address that. I also wanted to thank the city clerk and deputy clerk and all the election workers that pulled off another successful election. We got the results in by 10:00 PM, which in many cases doesn't happen. You know, I was watching Livonia's and they were, I think they were going in like 2:00 in the morning before like the final numbers were in. So we really do have a world-class city clerk and deputy clerk and all their election workers. So thank you, too, you know, I'm looking over here. But thank you so much, and you guys just run an amazing operation, so we appreciate you. It was brought up about the volunteer for the Veterans Meal Giveaway. Unfortunately, I didn't have any, you know, I didn't have any involvement with who could come and who can't come. But I did want to thank Wayne Ford for hosting it. We did give out on Saturday 400 meals. The John Glenn Football Players came, and I really wanted to thank them, because they gave up their Saturday for being there to carry boxes to cars. The Westland Professional Firefighters, the Westland Police, and then Crunk Gym and other countless volunteers. So thank you so much, because it means, as a granddaughter of a vet, it means a lot to me. I wanted to thank Councilwoman Rakowski, who was the brains of the operation. She put in, I'm sorry, Councilwoman, but I saw her put in time and effort on Saturday. So I wanted to thank her for that. Vic Barra, Commissioner Glenn Anderson, Wayne Mayer, John Racy, Deputy Clerk Shannon Inman, members of the Westland City Council, and former Mayor Mike Londo, who were there to support the event. I just really felt like it was a fantastic event. A lot of the veterans, we were calling at 2:00, and we were asking them if they were coming to get their box, and they were rushing up. And a lot of the police and fire actually did deliveries. So thank you to your teams, too, for doing that. You, you did a lot of drop-offs, and I know those people are, are very grateful, so we appreciate that. I wanted to thank the Relay for Life team. I don't know if Miriam is, is still here, she was here. They pulled off an absolutely amazing Pizza Palooza. I've never seen it like that ever. It was standing-room only, people out in the lobby. It was, it was insane. I don't think they expected that many people there, but I'll be curious, maybe Miriam can give us an update, how much they raised. But it was great. I see a lot of faces here in the room that attended, so I know that it's, it's a worthy cause. And congratulations to Vizies, too, for, for participating and all the vendors. So I think we did talk about the stuff of SWAT trucks, I won't cover that. I look forward to the Norrane Community Citizens Council event on the 29th. I don't know if you guys still need donations. I, I, yes, okay. Joanne said she still needs donations, so perhaps I can put that on my Facebook. I provided some donations, but Joanne, please let us know what else you need as well. And then also, I had Hamilton Elementary in Westland reach out to me. They have about 70 families that are looking for donations of shirts and pants and hats and gloves and stuff. I'll post that Sign Up Genius on my, my council page, Melissa Sampey. But this is a real rough time for a lot of people right now that are struggling, so perhaps if anyone considers donating, I know they would appreciate it. So our next meeting is Monday, December 4th at 7:00. We invite, obviously, residents to come out. If any residents want to contact me, they can look at my personal Facebook page, Councilwoman Melissa Sampey. They can call me at 734-637-2078. And I wanted to leave you with this quote about Thanksgiving I saw online. "My life is not perfect, but I am thankful for what I have." So I hope that everyone has a fabulous Thanksgiving. I wish you lots of memories, love and peace. Be safe and kind with each other, and I'll see you in two weeks.
Thank you. Councilman Gabel.
Thanks. Got a few things on my list tonight, so first, I'd like to start off by congratulating Mayor Coleman and Councilwoman Baumann on your being sworn in this night, tonight, and starting office immediately. Congratulations to my other three colleagues, as well as our city clerk, who won the election a couple of weeks ago. The, as was mentioned earlier, Edna Mae Parker will be 100 years old on November 30th. I first met Edna over 40 years ago, and she was my sponsor when I first joined the Westland Lions Club. Lion Edna, and yes, she is still a lion. While not physically able to move around like she used to, she's still sharp, knowledgeable, and opinionated. That hasn't changed. But we love you, Edna. Happy birthday. The, you know, there, as was mentioned earlier, there's the Stuff a SWAT Truck event. There is a lot of need out in this community this year, and as such, so I'll be supporting the Stuff a SWAT Truck event as well. But the Community, Westland Community Foundation has a Christmas toy drive, and the event will be on Thursday, November 30th, here at City Hall, from 6:00 to 8:00 PM. We'll have some refreshments and some entertainment here, as we have in the past. But there are also boxes, drop boxes, at Fire Station 1, which is right here on Central City Parkway, and at the Wayne Westland Federal Credit Union. So if you can't make it to the event but would like to contribute to help the Goodfellows out for, or, I mean, I'm sorry, the Salvation Army for the, the drive, the toy drive this year, you can drop them off either at the Fire Station, the Credit Union, or please come and join us on Thursday, November 30th. I would like to congratulate Coach Jason Mensing of John Glenn Coach, who was named as the Division 1 Region 4 Coach of the Year by the Michigan High School Football Coaches Association. Tremendous honor. He's done a great job turning that program around. I made it to a few games this season, and it's, it's a well-deserved honor, so congratulations, Coach. I'd also like to thank Brendan, who got up here for his comments about Aubrey and the great job that she did. You know, I think I'm the only council member sitting up here that's been through multiple administration changes. And with a new administration comes change. And I want to welcome Alex as our, our new Economic Development Director. I'm, I've known Alex for a number of years. I'm sure he's going to do a great job for us. And any help I can give you, please feel free to reach out. And I think that pretty well covers it. I just wish everyone a safe and happy Thanksgiving, and that's all I have. Thanks.
Thank you. Pro Tem Rakowski.
Thank you, Council President. Good evening, everyone. Start off by congratulating Mayor Coleman and Councilwoman Baumann on their inauguration today. Welcome, Emily. I am excited to serve with you. I'm looking forward, Mayor Coleman, to your new style of leadership that you'll be leading our, our city into, and hopefully, you know, there will be some exciting changes. And I, I am in support of what we've done this evening, but I, I do want to make sure that we are really studying these inadequacies, if you will, of our city and work together to, to get some good programming and, and to Councilman McDermott's point, you know, to improve the lives of our residents. So I look forward to that. Congratulations, Mr. Clerk, on another successful run. You know, you, you just keep scaring them away, so, you know.
Nobody wants to do a job.
Well, no. Well, maybe, maybe so, but you're, you're a testament to, and to dedication for our community. And I just want to thank you and Deputy Clerk Inman for a wonderful election. It's hard work, it's new work, and I think you did Westland proud by being the pilot city to show the rest of our communities how this is going to move in the future. So thank you. Thank you as well to all the people that took time to participate, either in voting or in helping all of us vote by our election workers. Congratulations to Councilwoman Sampey and Councilman McDermott as well. It's a, it's an honor and a privilege to be able to sit up here again with, with all of you, and I, I look forward to it. And I am, I'm just so grateful in this season of Thanksgivings to have the opportunity again. There's a lot of really interesting things brought to the table. We talked, you know, we heard comments about the Dyer Center. We, you know, Mr. Powell and, you know, Josh Water Tower, Water Tower Powell. You know, I, I think these are both things that are worthy of talking about, and I think we also have to recognize that with some of the economic challenges perhaps our school district is facing and some of the partnerships that we are trying to pursue with the ARPA dollars, that we, we're going to have to come back to the table and address some of those things. And, you know, so, so who knows? Perhaps there's a tower in the future. I, I haven't had the pleasure of meeting Mrs. Parker, who is 100. That's amazing. It seems to me that there is a large number of Westland residents, and particularly residents in the Southeast Homeowners Association area, that are Centarians. It seems, it's, there's so many. It's amazing. I think that it just shows you the strength of their community and, and how they love and care for one another, and that's probably, should stand as an example of how we can treat one another as well. So happy birthday, Mrs. Parker. With that, I will just leave you all with a tidying of, of Thanksgivings. If you have someone to celebrate with, I hope you enjoy your time with them. Wow. Sorry. Oh, that's new. And if you're in a, in a new season of life without those at your table. Sorry. I hope that you have peace and that you are strengthened by the memory of them. Sorry. Really, really sorry. Okay. So happy Thanksgivings to all of you. Please know that when we, when I personally count my blessings, I count this twice. It is an honor and a privilege, and I look forward to seeing all of you in December. Have a good evening.
Thank you, Pro Tem. All right, everybody, wake up. Yeah, yeah, don't bring me down. You know, it's easy to get me going, too, so don't do that to me. So I'd like to start by thanking the Pro Tem for leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance this evening. And then, of course, congratulations, Mayor Coleman. Tough race, very decisive win. Look forward to what you have planned and look forward to working together. I, I see a lot of movement already and some things happening, so we would like to be part of that. So we, we look forward to our upcoming leadership meeting where we can talk about your short, mid, and long-term goals and how the council can work together with you to achieve those. That being said, also, some people have asked for a study session. So in order for me to have a good study session, I need the administration to participate. So part of that discussion will make sure that you and your team be ready to help us in having that study session. So thank you. Looking forward to doing it. Congratulations to Councilwoman Baumann. Now, I, I have to ask, because this happens every so often, we get a new council member and someone really doesn't know how to pronounce their name or they butcher it, so I want you to go on record and tell everybody in the city of Westland what the proper pronunciation is of your last name, please.
There is a story with that, but I'll spare you.
Yeah.
This time. Baumann.
Baumann. So everybody's heard. It's Baumann. It's not Bowman, it's not Baumann, it's Baumann. Okay? So that is how you pronounce the councilwoman's name? Councilwoman Emily Baumann. Congratulations, welcome to the council. We spent some time on, last Monday, a week ago, walking you through if there's anything else you need from me. And of course, I'll be reaching out to you to kind of show you where all the little hidden tricks are, you know, so the, the hidden showers and everything else that they said that we have here that we don't. So...
There are no council showers.
There are no council showers. Okay.
Isn't there a chocolate fountain?
Not yet. We're working on that. Welcome to Alex Garza. So it's a, you know, Aubrey put a lot of work into that, and she had a lot of irons in the fire, okay? So she had a lot of things. We had RRC going on that seems to be in a spot right now, so like to find some resolution or where we at on RRC, as well as a number of other things. And of course, you got your big high-ticket items that you have to go ahead and work on, because the expectation is we got to turn it around. So, I mean, the entire council has offered their support, as well as me. It's a big part of this community is our economic development. It's probably the one com, one amount of feedback I get from residents only. What's going on with this spot? What are we doing with that spot? When are you guys going to put in this? Then I have to remind the residents, "Well, it doesn't work that way. We can't go to the business store and pick one off the shelf and put one there." But it's a lot more involved, and you're going to be a big part of that. So look forward. You being successful means everyone's successful, and that means that I want you to be successful, as well as the rest of the council, I'm sure. So congratulations, welcome to the team. And we have no learning curve here, so now does immediate fire. So ominous, ominous, nabisco. What do we, Edna Parker. I don't think I've ever met Ms. Parker, but congratulations and happy birthday, 100 years. I don't know if I want to be around that long, but I mean, she's here because she deserves to be. I probably won't make it that long, but congratulations, happy birthday, Edna, and thank you for all the years of service you've given to this city. All right, what else? Thank you to Aubrey and Vic. While they're not here, and as well as every administration changes, so does the team around it. Great number of the staff here works at the pleasure of the mayor. In order for the mayor to realize his vision, sometimes some staffing changes have to happen, and that's his call. It's happened before. It's happened before then. It'll happen in the future, all right? The mayor, the administration, the CEO, the coach, the leader of the team, he's going to go ahead and sometimes build his team what he needs for him to be successful and realize his dream. While I'm sad that Vic and Aubrey are not here, I know that the amount of work they put into the city will be felt for years to come. Okay? So thank you, Aubrey and Vic, if you're watching this, for your years of service, and good luck, Mayor, for building a new team. I know it's not an easy thing to do, all right? So we'll be here in support. And without that, I will also say happy Thanksgiving. It's my favorite holiday of the year, and I've said this every year, because the only thing I have to do is cook turkey, watch football, have a couple beers, sit on my couch, and be thankful with my family and friends around me. And it should be the best holiday for everybody, because the only expectation is that you be thankful and spend time with your loved ones. That's why it's my favorite holiday. And last but not least, and most important, go Blue. Is there a motion to adjourn?